Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Kevin, would you please lead us?
(laughing) Oh, Kevin.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Musick is absent. Trustee Rocco is absent. Trustee Sheehan is absent. Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Here.
President DiCipio?
Here.
Quorma's present.
Thank you, Amanda. First order of business is swearing in a paid-on call firefighter, Kevin Volcekman. Kevin was hired as probationary paid-on call firefighter on May 1st, 2017. When hired by our village, he was already a state-certified firefighter and emergency medical technician basic, and had been working as a paid-on call firefighter in another nearby village for approximately four years. Kevin attended Romeo Ville Fire Academy. He grew up in the village and still resides here today. His mother Sandy has served the village in various capacities over many years, serving as paid-on-call EMT, paramedic, and firefighter. She is currently employed at the village full-time through our contract paramedic firefighter provider, PSI. Kevin's father also previously served the village as a paid-on-call firefighter, as did also his grandfather, Bob Mann Senior. During the past several months as a probationary firefighter, Kevin has been learning about LaGrange Park Fire Department policies, standard operating guidelines, and general operations. Most recently, he has successfully completed his probationary testing, which includes general knowledge of policies, SOGs, apparatus, and equipment, and a practical driving and pumping test. We therefore recommend swearing-in of Kevin Volcekman as a paid-on-call firefighter for the LaGrange Park Fire Department. Chief, would you do the honors, please?
Okay. If you want to start, you can sing. (laughing) Actually, we're going to start with Amanda swearing in.
Please, right hand, and repeat after me. I, Kevin Volcekman?
I, Kevin Volcekman.
hereby solemnly swear?
hereby solemnly swear?
that I will uphold and defend?
that I will uphold and defend?
the Constitution of the United States of America?
the Constitution of the United States of America?
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
and I will faithfully carry out?
and I will faithfully carry out?
all duties imposed upon?
all duties imposed upon?
and entrusted in me?
and entrusted in me?
as firefighter for the village of LaGrange Park?
as firefighter for the village of LaGrange Park?
Obviously, we congratulate Kevin for getting to this point tonight. He obviously has a rich history in the village with his family and the fire department. We appreciate him coming to us after leaving another community, and I don't think we stole him, but (laughing) he wanted to come here for some reason. I wonder why. On a serious note, it takes a lot, I say this a lot, but it takes a lot to be a paid-on-call firefighter in this day and age between the training and the commitment. You have to do a lot at night, you know, training, you have to make a certain amount of calls. Obviously, he had to complete the Fire Academy and his EMT school, which again, he did as a part-time person. So, we do thank him for his years of training, and now we look forward to a long, hopefully, career here as a paid-on-call firefighter. I do want you to maybe quickly mention who you have in the audience tonight?
I have my mom, my stepdad, Keith Udeski, who's also lieutenant in the city of Chicago, and Chief of Lions. I have Sarah, my sister, and Ashley, my sister as well, and Kirsten, she's on the phone. (laughing) My grandmother from my dad's side, and then my grandma from my mom's side as well. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for giving Kevin to us. What I would like to do now is ask Kevin, we have a tradition of actually pinning the badge, kind of marking the ceremony off by pinning his new badge on him, and if you want to go ahead and call a family member or members up, it is up to you.
Sarah?
Me? She's on the phone. (laughing) I got the phone. We're Skyping and Kirsten via Dallas.
Oh.
Oh, how nice.
Ambulance here doing.
There you go. Do you know how to do that?
Nope.
Jew!
I've already been told, don't poke him.
Don't be, there's an ambulance here.
As many of you don't know, Kevin took my badge number, which is an honor for me. And on Friday, Kevin and I, along with Brian Whitman and my partner Matt, won a Loyal Award, so that is an honor as well. So I figured I'd let his sister.
Nice.
Got that?
No.
I just need some help hovering over me. It's that way.
Yeah, no.
I did it! You did it, girl!
Congratulations.
Kevin, on behalf of the board, congratulations. Welcome, and what an honor for you and your family. Sandy, and congratulations on the award you and your team received.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, employee recognition ceremony. Julia?
Welcome, everyone. President DiCipio, did you want to come down here and help me do the honors? Every year in May, we set aside time at our May Board meeting to recognize the hard work of our employees, and we do that by recognizing the work that our employees do at milestone anniversaries of service. And tonight, we're really excited because we have 15 employees that we're going to recognize tonight. I understand that not all of them are here tonight, but we want to make sure that we provide our thanks and our gratitude for every employee that provides service and strives for excellence every day in the services that we provide to our residents. I talked to a couple of department managers about the 15 folks that we're going to be recognizing tonight, and some of the adjectives that describe the 15 folks include "go-getter", "a confident thinker", "reliable", "does whatever it takes", "goes the extra mile", "passionate", "always aspiring and inspiring", "very committed", "always a leader", "team player", "and very dedicated". So these came from the department managers and the folks that know and evaluate the services that are provided. They think such wonderful things and provide such positive feedback, along with the residents, about the employees that we have. So, tonight, we are very thankful for all the work that you do. 15 employees with a number of service anniversaries. We're going to start off by recognizing employees that have five years of service. We're going to start off with Tim Griffin in the Police Department. Five years of service. And a gift and a certificate. Congratulations. Thank you for all of you.
Thank you, everyone.
Five years of service. Thanks, Tim. Five years of service. The Director of Public Works, Brendan McLaughlin. Public Works. Five years of service. Casey Shuniman, Public Works. Casey's not here, but we will keep his certificate award and his gift here to the side. Next on our list, Norman Stiegelbauer. Norman is a crossing guard with the Village of LaGrange Park. Is Norman here? Let's give him a run. Next on our list, Pat Stelmack in the Fire Department. Five years of service. Pat? Is that here? No? Okay, next. Jennifer Pluard, a crossing guard for the Village of LaGrange Park, Police Department. Jennifer, 10 years. Can we hold her award for us? Cynthia Podlasek, crossing guard, 10 years.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list, 10 years in the Police Department. Officer Jennifer Welk. Congratulations. Next on our list, in the Police Department, 15 years of service. Tim Contoy. Congratulations. There you go. Next on our list, in the Fire Department. Tom Norvillas. Tom. (applause) 15 years of service. We'll hold Tom's award. Next, in the Police Department, 15 years of service. Joe Rentsch. We're going to hold his award. Next, in the Police Department, also 15 years of service. Peter Roche.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the Fire Department, also 15 years. Steven Story. Okay. In the Police Department, 30 years of service. Sergeant Felix Hernandez.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And the last on our list, 35 years of service in the Fire Department. Norm Rick. Congratulations.
Is your certificate?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we have a gift for you as well. Thank you for your (inaudible).
(laughing) A gift from the village and a certificate for framing. Thank you again to all of the employees, and thank you, thank all of you for coming this evening to celebrate with us. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Who's reading like she is? You have Patty. Who's reading Scott? Who's reading Scott? Who's reading? Cause he has Patty's. Jim didn't tell me. (laughing) I hate when he does that. He's like, "Can you read that?" (laughing) I could do Scott, I guess. He doesn't have any. He doesn't have any action items. I could do Scott.
Oh, Jennifer?
Am I on? Okay.
Come on in, they got your award back.
No.
I think it's Scott. Don't tell me it's Scott. Mike.
You have promised to public safety. Pablo to public safety?
Okay, next up. Obviously, the crowd didn't realize what was coming next.
(laughing) Oh, I'm on public works.
We have an Eagle Scout that we're going to recognize tonight. Michael Magnus. This evening, I am pleased to recognize a young resident's achievement, the Eagle Scout. Michael, would you please come up? Michael joined scouting as a Cub Scout with PAC-90 while attending Brook Park School, which is where the PAC meets. At the time, his mother served as den leader with the PAC. Michael became a Boy Scout in February 2011 with Troop 90, which also meets at Brook Park School. The troop is led by Dale Metzasek, a longtime resident of LaGrange Park. Michael progressed through the ranks of Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, Life, and now Eagle. During Boy Scouts, Michael held leadership positions of Den Chief, Assistant Patrol Leader, Patrol Leader, and he also obtained 25 merit badges. In addition to various weekend and summer camps, he also participated in scouting high-adventure trips. One was the Great Lakes Sailing Adventure, where he and other scouts spent nearly a week training on sailing skills aboard a 52-foot sailboat, and another was where they went whitewater rafting and camping in the mountains of Virginia. Michael was also inducted into the Order of the Arrow, Scouting's National Honor Society. Michael organized a group of scouts to help the Fisher House, which is located at Edward Hines Veterans Administration Hospital. The Fisher House is a home away from home for family members, caregivers, or loved ones of patients receiving medical care at the hospital. Michael organized the exterior painting of the storage building on the site, along with fencing. He also collected donations for those participating in the project to help family members stay there, and such donations of toiletries and other items needed on a daily basis throughout their stage. Michael is graduating this week from River Cypress Field High School, where he played lacrosse and ice hockey during his past year. He will be attending Illinois State University in the fall, and he is pursuing a major in education as he plans to teach history while also coaching sports at some level during his career. On behalf of the village and the Board of Trustees, congratulations on such a prestigious achievement. And I think it's important to note that currently only 6% of the Boy Scouts achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. Now, I've done a couple of these ceremonies where they've actually gotten the award, and you would be amazed at the amount of work that goes into achieving this great accomplishment. That's why only 6% of the Boy Scouts achieve this, because it is so demanding and so rigorous, but it also brings out the leadership, stewardship skills of these individuals that hopefully someday will be brought back to our community. So with that, I'd like to ask Chief Magnus and Michael's mother to come up. His brother, you can stay there. And as I always like to say, the apple doesn't fall apart from the tree. Chief has got a beautiful family, and it's through the work and ethics and dedication of his beautiful wife and Chief himself that the children have been so successful throughout their lives, their short lives already. So with that, Michael, congratulations on your accomplishment and good luck.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing me as a long journey, and thank you to my parents for helping me a lot. (laughing) Oh, thank you very much.
And his brother gets a lot of the credit, too.
(laughing)
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Listen, I say the third card, you guys can show up.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, moving on. Next on our agenda is public participation of agenda-related items only. Would anyone care to address the board? So you know, we'll move on to consent agenda. Amanda?
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes. Village Board meeting, April 24th, 2018. Executive session, April 24th, 2018. Work session meeting, May 8th, 2018. Executive session, May 8th, 2018. B, action amendments to liquor regulations. Hour of sale. Motion to approve and ordinance amending Chapter 112 of Title 11 of the LaGrange Park Municipal Code regulating liquor sales and license. C, action 2018-19, MFT General Maintenance Resolution. Motion approving a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for the expenditure of $261,000 in MFT funds. D, action Sherwood Road resurfacing. Motion approving the IDOT Local Public Agency Agreement for federal participation. And two, approving a resolution for appropriation of funds for the purpose of paying for local agency share for construction for Sherwood Road improvements. E, action Authorization to Destroy Executive Session Recordings. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the destruction of certain verbatim records of closed meetings. F, action Motion to authorize the President and Chairperson of the Finance Committee to sign the Register for Bills and authorize the Village Clerk and Treasurer to sign checks in the payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. And G, lastly, motion to authorize the Village Treasurer and Village Clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and June 26, 2018, with subsequent approval of the Payroll Register and Voucher Register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on June 26, 2018.
I want to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as reported.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion is second. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
President DiCipio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Next is Village Managers' report. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I have just one item to report this evening, and that is that the village will soon be rolling out its new website with a new look, with new ways to communicate and receive feedback from the community. The last couple of weeks included quite a bit of staff training to be able to upload information. This is a content management site, so all departments will have a part in putting together and updating information at the village's website. At this time, the plan is to go live on the 24th, and as long as we plan to get the photos uploaded and all the finishing touches on some of the pages, we think we can hold to that website timeline. But it looks very good, very smart, and includes a nice new logo that is modern, but very reminiscent of the village logo that we've had for a number of years. So, we're really excited about this update, and thanks to all staff that have been working so hard on the development of the new website. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Next, Administration Committee. Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have a few items to report on, and one item for discussion and action. First, the items to report on is first regarding the Memorial Day Ceremony, which is scheduled for Sunday, May 27th. Our Community Park will honor all veterans and current military personnel at the Fourth Annual Memorial Weekend Ceremony. Ceremony will begin at 1:00 PM at the LaGrange Park Veterans Memorial at Oak and Sherwood Street. Military ceremony hosted by Robert E. Colter Jr., American Post, 1941, will include a national anthem by our Park Junior High Forte Singers, wreath presentation by Boy Scout Troop 111, reading of the names of the bricks that have been installed in the past year, a 21-gun salute, and playing of echo taps by Patrick King and Daniel Toey. There will be limited seating for seniors and those who require special assistance. Feel free to bring your own chair and enjoy the short ceremony. Please note that additional parking is available at the north end of Jewel's Parking Lot. For further information, please contact Jim Zwitt, who is the Veterans Memorial Community Representative, at 708-712-2692, or Amanda Kennedy at the Community Park District, and that number is 708-354-4580. Notice to the village that the village offices will be closed on Monday, May 28th, and observance of Memorial Day. Regular office hours will resume on Tuesday, May 30th, at 8:30 AM. And the last item to report on is a reminder regarding the vehicle stickers that will be begin to be on sale starting June 1st. Every resident must purchase a LaGrange Park vehicle sticker for each vehicle they own and use in the village, including leased or company-owned vehicles registered elsewhere. New residents and residents who buy a new vehicle have 60 days to purchase a sticker. Vehicle stickers must be purchased by July 31st each year. Vehicle stickers are $35 per year or $15 per year for seniors for their first vehicle when seniors are 65 years of age prior to July 1st. For questions regarding vehicle stickers, please call the Village Hall at 708-354-0225. And the next item is for discussion and action, and it's regarding the travel expenses related to the recent WCMC 2018 Legislative Conference that was held downstate in Springfield, as referred to as the Drive Down to Springfield. The Local Government Travel Expense Control Act mandates that a local government's corporate authorities must approve by roll call vote all travel expenses by the corporate authorities. On May 9th of 2018, village representatives attended the WCMC 2018 Legislative Conference Drive Down in Springfield. As required under the act, travel expenditures for the WCMC conference are itemized on the attached travel form that was part of our packet. Once approved by the village's board, staff will process expenditures in accordance with the village's travel expense policy, which was adopted by the board in January of 2017. So, Mr. President and Board, I would like to submit a motion to approve travel expenses in the amount of $406.80 for attending the WCMC 2018 Legislative Conference in Springfield, Illinois.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
President DiCipio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And, Mr. President, that concludes my report for the administration area this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Building and Zoning Committee, Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the Building Department activities for April of 2018. 90 permits were issued in April compared to 92 last April. The village has issued 273 permits through the end of April compared to 235 at the end of April 2017. Estimated construction costs for the month were approximately 93% higher than last April. Permit fees collected were substantially higher for the month, up 47% compared to last April. 125 inspections were conducted this April compared to 148 last April. 10 were not approved. During the month, a permit was issued for the demolition of the six-story building at the Congregation of St. Joseph. Demo has begun, and at this point, as anticipated, demo will be completed in early June. Permit was issued in April for interior renovations to the PNC Bank. The work is mainly cosmetic and does include some interior office renovations. Staff investigated noise complaints related to the car wash at 31st and Kemmen, focusing on the automatic pay machine. This is most likely due to the increased usage with the owner offering special and increased marketing. Staff worked with the owner to reduce the decibel level of the automated machine. During the month, staff received plans for the remodeling of two spaces at the village market, one of which is for a proposed new eclectic barber shop. And then I also have one item that is an action item. On March 20th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider zoning application number 2018-3 filed by Robert and Veronica Dominiac. The application requests a variation from Section 153.193E2D of the zoning code to reduce the required rear yard stepback for a detached garage from five feet reduce the required rear yard step back for a detached garage from five feet to two-and-a-half feet. If granted, the variation would permit the property owner to rebuild the two-car detached garage within the same exact footprint as the current garage. The Planning and Zoning Commission accepted testimony and evidence into the record. Upon conclusion of the testimony and discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission determined that the applicant met the standards for a variation and recommended the village board grant the above noted variations. I did want to make note that in the transcripts, it said that Jim Lee was actually absent for the meeting, but he was there. He was present, and he also voted for in favor of this. So it says that there were three ayes, there were actually four, and two nays. So I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance granting a certain variation for 1001 East Sherwood, public hearing number 2018-03.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Zora?
Thank you. So when I was looking at this initially, Chairman Boyd, looking at the transcripts, he was against this because I think his concern was that reconstruction of an existing garage, he was concerned that there would be every time a resident wanted to make an adjustment to their garage, that they'd be coming to us. So he was not in favor of this. But as I said, there were four that were in favor, and I really don't have an issue with this because it's an existing garage, it's being relocated in the same location, and it just happens that the setbacks have changed since the garage was initially located. And there was a comment in the transcripts also that the owner did not want to relocate the existing garden, which I feel like a garden could be relocated, but I am in favor of this, and I don't see any issue why we wouldn't approve this. Thank you.
Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would concur with those comments in that it was basically it's a replacement of a structure that's in place in that area, in that location today, so I would support it as well.
Seeing no other discussion, Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
President Disipio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
You want to be invited to the opening of the garage. Good luck. Anything else, Trustee Zora?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, Engineering Capital Projects, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have three items to report on. Work was started on the village's 2018 paving program by K-5 Construction Corporation. The contractor will work on the project going from the northernmost streets and proceeding south. All major construction activities in front of the schools will be performed between mid-June and mid-August to minimize our interference with their operations. Completion of all work is expected to occur by late fall. Second item, construction on the Harding Avenue project was started in mid-April. The contractor, Arrow Road Construction, has made rapid progress and is expected to complete all the paving work by mid-June. Landscape restoration may also be able to be performed prior to the onset of the summer heat. Third and final item, the final plans and specifications for the Sherwood Road improvements, LaGrange Road to Harding Avenue, have been forwarded to the Illinois Department of Transportation for inclusion with their June contract letting. We anticipate a July award date with construction on this project beginning in late August. Again, all work should be completed this construction season. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee in Louisville, Trustee Messick, Matthew Mathis, Trustee Lotner, would you give the report?
Certainly, Mr. President. Thank you. From the public safety area, have reports on the police department, the fire department, and one item for discussion and action. First of all, regarding the police department, report for the month, total crimes reported are similar to last year, with 73 incidents reported this year compared to 66 reported through the same timeframe of the previous year. Traffic enforcement is above last year's totals at the timeframe, with 2,053 total citations written this year compared to 2,017 from the previous year. Total police activity is at 3280, 3,280 for total incidents this year, as compared to 3,237 from the previous year. Foot patrol, which is the walk-and-talk program, has begun in May, whenever the weather has permitted, and will continue through October in all areas of the village. The positive program is completed by all members of the department, from the chief of police through every patrol officer. We've had excellent feedback on this from the community, and the results of this is additional safety on a daily basis, providing safety on a daily basis for very interactive community policing effort. The 2017-2018 school year is soon coming to a close. It brings another successful Adopt-A-Cop program to the end for the grade levels of K through 8 at Brook Park, Forest Road, Barnesdale, and St. Louise. And as a reminder, we encourage all residents to lock and secure your vehicles, your garages, and your homes when you're especially not around. Always keep valuables out of sight at all times. Do not become an easy target for any crime of opportunity. From the fire department area for the month, EMS incidents this month were at 124. There had been 533 year-to-date compared to 569 year-to-date in 2017. Fire rescue 2017, fire rescue incidents this month were 37, and there had been 149 year-to-date compared to 157 in 2017. Pierce manufacturing, the manufacturing of our new fire truck, provided several training sessions over three days regarding operation of our new ladder truck. Personnel continued training throughout the month and began planning for equipment relocation from our current truck and mounting of new equipment. On April 18th, an orientation session was held for paid-on-call firefighter applicants, which was attended by 27 applicants. Oral interviews and physical agility tests are taking place this month. As a neighbor, I witnessed this, and let me just tell you, it is quite an exhaustive effort for these individuals in full garb to be walking around the fire truck or the fire department for no less than a couple dozen times, and these individuals are to be commended for their efforts in this. We most likely will lose some candidates in the process, but we're very optimistic so far. Personnel conducted training at the vacant six-story CSJ building, covering topics such as search, forcible entry, standpipe, and hose operations, and high-rise firefighting tactics. A couple of our personnel attended the fire department instructors conference in Indianapolis, which had nearly 35,000 attendees from 65 different countries. Fire prevention staff conducted final fire alarm, fire sprinkler, and occupancy inspections for the Dollar Tree at 355 North LaGrange Road, and if you haven't been there, please check it out. It's a very nice new store, and for Posto 31 at 1017 East 31st Street, which will be open soon, I'm sure. The transition from PSSI to PSI of our paramedic firefighter contract service took place this month. Although there are some changes in company policies that are related to the employees, our overall operations remain the same as they have been with no changes or charges or disruptions in our service. On Easter Sunday, we responded to a vehicle crash on LaGrange Road at 31st Street. A total of 11 patients were evaluated, with seven transported by ambulance to area hospitals. We were assisted by six different neighboring fire departments that provided ambulances. And on April 18th, at approximately 4:00 PM, we responded to assist the Hensdale Fire Department with the fire at the American Beauty Mansion. The fire was elevated to a Mavis 311 level alarm based upon its size and extent of the fire. We provided an engine company, two fire investigators, and the chief responded as the scene safety officer. That concludes the items of report, and I have one item for discussion and action once I get there. And it's regarding the purchase of two 2018 Ford Utility Police Interceptors, all-wheel-drive, and the sale of a surplus property item. Purpose of this discussion is the vehicles is to replace existing police units 230 and 223, which is a 2013 Chevy Tahoe with 159,000 miles, and a 2007 Ford Crown Vic with 141,000 miles. Please note that the 2013 Chevy Tahoe listed above will be kept and utilized as an alternate pool car for village personnel. The 2018-2019 Village of LaGrange Park budget includes funds to purchase replacement of police vehicles. The Suburban Purchase Cooperative has awarded a contract to Curie Motor Fleet located in Frankford, Illinois, for the 2018 Ford Utility Police Interceptor All-Wheel Drive. $64,000 was budgeted for the vehicles and not to exceed that amount, which includes the entire build-out to both vehicles. Staff is recommending that the purchase of the two Ford Utility Police Interceptors is specified from Curie in the amount not to exceed $64,000. And in addition, the 2007 Ford Crown Vic listed above in our materials will need to be identified as surplus property in accordance with the ordinance that was expressed in our packet for the village board's approval. So the action that we are requesting is that these items are for discussion and potential action, so I'd like to submit a motion to approve the purchase of two 2018 Ford Utility Police Interceptors, all-wheel-drive vehicles, through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Program from Curie Motors Fleet in an amount not to exceed $64,000 to be expensed to the 2019 Capital Projects Fund. Second, and to add to that motion, is to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus property owned by the Village of LaGrange Park for the 2007 Crown Vic.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Lotner?
In looking at this, Mr. President, it appears that everything does seem to be in order. It's planned, it's the planned timing of replacing the vehicles that we do have. It's in accordance with the purchasing ordinances and the release of the one vehicle that we do plan to sell. So I would support this motion.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
President Disipio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report and discussion and action item for this evening for the Public Safety Committee area.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Public Works Committee, Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the April 2018 activities for the Public Works Department. Tree maintenance was performed during 73 regular hours. Five diseased trees were removed by public works staff. Six overtime hours were spent spreading 10 and 1/2 tons of salt on 53 miles of village roadway. 35.5 hours were spent on the maintenance of public works, equipment, and vehicles. 105 hours were spent filling potholes and patching water excavations, 13.5 tons of asphalt. One catch basin was reconstructed and repaired. Street sweeping continued as weather permitted, spending 62 daytime hours. 137 daytime shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the public works facility, Village Hall on 31st Street. Staff planted spring flowers at the Village Hall and spread mulch around trees and planting beds. Employees attended a training seminar to be recertified in CPR and operate an AED unit. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending resident concerns, and various repairs and preventative maintenance were performed on village vehicles. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Finance Committee, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. This memo summarizes the village's general fund financial performance through April 30th, 2018. We have now completed fiscal year 2018, which began May 1st, 2017. The detailed revenue and expense report and the monthly cash and investment dashboard are also attached for your review. While the fiscal year ended April 30th, this is not the final report for fiscal year 2018. For the next two months, we will continue to process any outstanding payables and receivables which were due prior to May 1st. These items will be reflected in the village's annual audit report, which will be issued later this year and presented to the village board. The highlights. Fiscal year-to-date general fund revenue is at 100% of the annual budget and about 1.8% lower than last year. Property tax receipts are lower last year by about 1.6% due to refunds of prior-year taxes. Sales tax receipts are up 1.8% this year, while town communication taxes are down by 9.2%. Permit revenue is about 6% below last year, but at over 142% of budget. Intergovernmental revenue is at 92% of budget and down 2.8% from last year, primarily due to a decline in income tax receipts as a result of the reductions included in the state budget. Charges for services are up about 8% due to increased ambulance fee revenue. Fine revenue is 8% lower than last year and at 93% to budget. Outstanding tickets have been sent to the state's debt recovery program, which should result in increased receipts later in the year. Miscellaneous revenue is up about 21% due primarily to an increase in payment in lieu of taxes, interest, and tower lease revenues have also increased. Total general fund expenditures are within expectations at 90% of the annual budget and at about 181,000 above last year. The interest increases primarily due to new LTAC annual contribution, which is paid from the police and fire budgets. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Next up, Commercial Revitalization Committee. Again, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. President. Let me get there real quick. Thank you, Trustee Zora. The, I have two items to report on, and then I also have an item for action, for discussion and action. The village board will consider the reinstatement of a development agreement with JGK 31st Street Properties and Godfrey Hospitality LLC this evening. Depending approval of the agreement, the restaurant, Posto 31, is anticipated to open by the end of May. The owners of 1201 Barnesdale submitted zoning applications this week in anticipation of making certain exterior improvements to the site and expanding the use of the site beyond interior storage and accessory retail sales due to outdoor storage and truck rental. Now I'd like to go to the action item, and the purpose of this action item is to approve the reinstatement of a redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of 1015 and 1017 East 31st Street. As a general background, at the October 24th, 2017 Village Board meeting, the village board approved ordinance number 1068 and a redevelopment agreement with Godfrey Hospitality LLC, providing incentives for a new restaurant at 1015 and 1017 East 31st Street, using tax incremental financing district funds and business development district dollars. The agreement required the owner to use his best efforts to complete construction and open the restaurant by March 15th, 2018. At the March 27th, 2018 Board meeting, the village board withdrew the village's offer by taking action to repeal ordinance 1068. That same evening, the village board authorized and directed staff and council to draft an updated redevelopment agreement to include a deadline for signature-only after all final building plans have been approved and with a deadline for expiration if developer does not sign by date certain. As an update to that, much progress has been made in recent weeks, warranting consideration of the reinstatement of the redevelopment agreement. The owner has installed mechanical screening in conformance with the zoning code. The owner has submitted all final building plans, which were approved on May 4th, 2018. The owner passed its final building inspection, which was conducted on May 14th, 2018. The final inspection indicates two outstanding items that remain to be addressed. First item, approval of the final MWRD inspection and final approval of the sewer line. This is not yet complete, but it's progressing quickly towards resolution. The building department would typically grant temporary occupancy in such a situation due to the village being the co-applicant and given we await a third party to administer. The second item is disconnection of two water and sewer lateral lines from the 31st Street mains. This work requires a permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation. The owner explained that IDOT has delayed the permit process and, as such, should not have the opening of the restaurant delayed. The village has confirmed with IDOT that there's been a delay in processing the permit, which was initially submitted on December 7th, 2017. The village is comfortable moving forward and granting a temporary occupancy condition upon addressing the deadline for this requirement in the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement requires that the disconnection be complete 120 days after the agreement. Regarding the above, staff has the following recommendation. Staff recommends adopting the attached ordinance approving the reinstatement of a redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of 1015, 1017 South 31st Street. The owner has met all building and zoning requirements that are under control at this time. Upon the execution of the redevelopment agreement, the building department will issue temporary occupancy to the owner, which is conditional approval for a period of 120 days. Once the MWRD and water and sewer disconnects are complete, required by the village at the owner's expense, the the owner's expense, the village will issue final occupancy. Motion action requested. This item is being placed on the May twenty-second board meeting and Jennifer discussion. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, to adopt an ordinance of the Village of LaGrange Park, Cook County, Illinois, approving the reinstatement of redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of ten-fifteen and ten-seventeen East Thirty-First Street.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, trustee Zora? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. After reviewing the documentation and looking at the circumstances that we had to go through to get this project near completion, and the fact that, under any normal circumstances, we would be issuing occupancy permits and delayed by the state, I'm in favor of reinstating this agreement.
Thank you, trustee Casera. Trustee Laughtner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm generally, of course, in support of this. The only thing that concerns me, and to clarify, to make sure I'm not misunderstanding, but it appears to me that the requirement for disconnecting, you know, the disconnection completing within a hundred-and-twenty days seems to be out of our control and the property locations' control. I mean, so I'm not sure what happens if it doesn't get disconnected in a hundred-and-twenty days. I'm not sure either one of the parties have the ability to ensure that.
What would happen is that we will keep in contact with the progress. They've made significant progress with IDOT, given there was a holdup in processing the administration of this. The owner has made significant progress, so we will keep in touch with them, and if we're getting close to a timeline where we don't think it's feasible, there would be an opportunity for an extension with the village board.
So you see that it's very likely that that will be completed?
We think so. Yeah, staff thinks so.
Okay. And with that, you know, I would support this.
Okay, I'm a hundred percent in support, and I want to commend Jason, and let's move forward with this, and congratulations, and we're looking forward to the opening of Posto Thirty-One. I'm glad that we are moving forward at a rapid rate here, so congratulations. Amanda call the roll?
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Laughtner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
I have to recuse myself.
President DiCipio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Or three to one, sorry.
The recusal is going to be recorded as an extension.
Thank you, trustee Casera.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on, other reports. Village clerk?
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer? Our village engineer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Committeeing clerk, does he report motion to approve as presented?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have two items. One is a proclamation. National Emergency Medical Services Week, May twentieth to the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. Whereas, the access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas, the Village of LaGrange Park provides a community-based EMS system comprised of well-equipped, well-prepared, and dedicated paramedics, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, and police officers. Whereas, Village of LaGrange Park EMS are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, Village of LaGrange Park EMS responded to over seventeen-hundred calls for assistance during the last calendar year. Whereas, EMS Week brings together local communities and medical personnel to honor the dedication of those who provide the day-to-day lifesaving services of medicine's frontline. Whether working together in the same community or across the nation, each and every EMS practitioner and agency share the ultimate goal of helping those in need of emergency medicine and putting the needs of others ahead of their own. Therefore, be it proclaimed that May twentieth to the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, is recognized as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you, Kathy. I have one other item that I'd like our community to hear about. It's an honor and a privilege for all of us, so I received a letter the other day yesterday, and I would like to read it. This letter is from Richie Pellegrino, the executive director of the West Central Municipal Conference. "On behalf of the members of the West Central Municipal Conference, I am honored to inform you that Julia Sidio has been selected as a recipient of the two thousand eighteen Jack Williams Award. As you know, intergovernmental cooperation is a hallmark of the West Central Municipal Conference. The ties that bind West suburban government and civic leaders are powerful and resilient. They have created a coalition of individuals committed to improving the quality of life for all those who live, work, and prosper in the region. It is in the spirit of kinship that the conference will present to you Julia Sidio on July fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, at our annual dinner, the Jack Williams Intergovernmental Achievement Award. This distinction is reserved for an elected official or appointed representative who has advanced intergovernmental cooperation. The award recognizes excellence in a specific project or a lifetime of achievement. We'd like to congratulate Ms. Sidio on receiving one of the highest honors in West suburban Cook County. This is something that is so deserved to this individual. We are blessed as a community to have Julia's expertise and her professionalism and her high ethical standards by which we can all live by and uphold. So Julia, on behalf of the board and the Village of LaGrange Park, we want to congratulate you on this great accomplishment."
Thank you. Thank you. The pleasure's mine, of course, working for LaGrange Park.
And I urge each and every board member to try their hardest to attend this dinner in all support of Julia's recognition. Not only that Cheryl Scott will be there, but Julia is the main speaker of the night. So we can end on some lewdly, but thank you, Julia, for all that you represent for our community. Okay, moving on. Public participation of non-agenda-related items, seeing none. Any new business? Motion to adjourn.
Submove?
Second.
Motion is second. Amanda call the roll?
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Laughtner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
President DiCipio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Meeting adjourned.